Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There is no report out of closed session this evening. Have a motion for adopting the agenda or any changes or additions to the agenda.
There's been a request to move 12B, which is reports, association reports to right before 5A.
Thank you. With that change, ask for a motion second please.
They moved.
On favor, a roll call, excuse me. Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers? Thank you. Reports from our representatives. CSAR, which you choose. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, President Vickers and board members. First of all, on behalf of Sarah and I, we would like to thank the district for the end of your barbecue. The staff very much enjoyed it and we really appreciate the grill masters and the girls. You guys did a fabulous job and we felt very special in the, all the... It was a great end of the year. I'm just trying to think of that, all the gifts given away and it was a great attendance and both labor unions really appreciated it. So, thank you very much. Tonight, I wanted to report on, Sarah and I are reporting on the calendar decision. We put out a joint survey and to both of our members and we had over 200 responses to it. So, to me, for our small district, that says a lot about how people feel about the calendar and our staff. This past year, the calendar committee was formed as a result of negotiation teams. The committee met four times and was comprised of a librarian, media specialist, an instructional aide, first grade teacher, a speech pathologist, a fifth grade teacher, a high school math teacher, and Mr. Conlin and an educational coach. The members were chosen to represent each site and to sure, ensure a broad base of perspective and voice from teachers and classified staff who work with students daily. Our thoughtful, student-centered recommendations were sent to the board for approval as per our contract states. The calendar committee is committed to the process that we have used for a number of years, which has always been respected by the board. However, things changed. The board did not approve the calendar and created their own calendar after two board meetings, resulting in a comparatively limited discussion of the topic. A large part of the discussion centered around the calendar committee being accused numerous times of creating a hostile calendar for dual-working families. Hostile is an emotionally charged word, which is disproportionate and overly dramatic and somewhat manipulative to the situation of childcare. Finding childcare may be inconvenient, but not hostile. While we are sensitive to childcare needs, working families need to secure childcare for 180 school days, no matter how you divide up the calendar. Many of our teachers also are dual-working families and parents that have to find childcare. So, it is a subject that we are sensitive to and that, you know, we coordinate with the Boys and Girls Club to ensure that as our calendar changes, so do they step in for after-school care. To clarify a few more points regarding the calendar decision, the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving has created a holding pattern for teachers presenting new curriculum or assigning tests during that time. We want to be able to set up our students for success, every student, every day, and continuous improvement, not penalize them because the parents planned the trip. They don't have a say in the family decisions as far as a trip. Having a full week off Thanksgiving, move those two days to start school on a Thursday and Friday. This allows for record building, relationships matter, getting students ready to learn, setting expectations of the classroom and school campus, as well as other preliminary activities and schedule changes, et cetera. Then, when Monday comes, everyone is ready to go. I can also tell you, as night at high school, it gives us time to move around our staff and to make sure that we are appropriately covering classes that need to be covered and making adjustments there. Spring break is a time to re-energize for the last nine weeks to the end of school. To move that week up to follow the Easter holiday in some years increases the time to the end of the school year, which is not good for students. The last nine weeks is a long haul packed with I-Rate, testing, FIBBLES, CASP, AP tests, and finals. I don't see how adding weeks at the end of the year helps our students to maintain their focus and energy for the tests and finish strong. Also, as a parent who had two kids through our district, that at the time, spring break was always moving, made it very difficult to plan for the future because you didn't know when spring break was going to be. So, having it set at a specific time came out of that calendar committee so that everyone knew when it was going to be and it was on a regular basis and it made it easier for families. We are the people who live the calendar with our students all 180 days. We understand the rhythm of the school year, its highs, its lows, how best to plan for breaks, tests, projects, and activities. We have worked together with the district officials on interest-based bargaining to have honest and passionate conversations to come to mutual agreements. While not perfect, we have practiced processes that have been respected and accepted by the board. When observing the board's discussion of calendar, appeared to me, the more experienced board members were not completely comfortable with disregarding what the calendar committee brought forward. It appeared you all recognize we have established a process over time and our past practice would be to accept the committee's recommendation. We ask that the board would continue to partner with us in the future, perhaps have a board member attend the calendar committee. We, as representatives of the classified and certified staff who are employees of each unified school district, request that you reconsider this decision. I also have some students at the high school, there were 196 signatures. They started this petition and part of it is that they want that Thanksgiving week off. They are ready for a break then and they also, the high school students also just want the calendar and their bell schedule and to stay the same for a while. The change is hard and, and so that's what motivated these 196 students to say, we want, we don't want any more changes. It's hard on them, it's hard on all of us to have lots of different changes. So, I'd like you guys to also consider that and I do appreciate we both do everything you guys do. I know it's hard to sit here and to make all these decisions and to be here late at night and having to stay focused on everything that goes on and all the details of so many different topics. So, hats off to you guys. I always appreciate you all and the work that you do for us. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your reports. Appreciate it. Public comment on non-agenda items, we've had a number of cards submitted and I'd like to ask my fellow board members if we, we have 20 minutes that we allow for the public comment on non-agenda items. We have more cards than that, so if we limit it to two minutes, or would you rather not?
I'd rather let people have three minutes.
Okay, then that would mean that we'll have to decide after that, 20 minutes is up, if we're going to listen to more. So, are you going to call them, Victoria? Thank you.
Michelle Foster? Your board members, I'm Michelle Foster and I have been a teacher at the high school for 24 years. I cannot tell you how elated I was when I heard we were finally getting a week off at Thanksgiving for the 23, 24 school year. Of course, there's the joy of not having to travel on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is a nightmare and usually a deterrent to go see family. And there's also the absenteeism issue for Monday and Tuesday that prevents forward progress in the curriculum. However, I'm here to talk about the most important issue, which was not discussed at all when deciding on the 24, 25, and 25, 26 calendars, and that is mental health. I teach health at the high school and spend four to five weeks, weeks each semester just on mental health alone. Why? Because we have a mental health crisis amongst our teenage population. Kids today are stressed, anxious, tired, lonely, depressed, and burnt out. They feel a ton of academic pressure to perform. From the time we start school, students go full speed ahead and many end up running on empty by week 12, which is right about the time when we break for Thanksgiving. If you walk into any classroom at the high school the week before Thanksgiving, you can almost smell the fatigue. The students need that whole week off school to focus on rest and recharging. They can take a step back from academics for a moment and spend time with friends and family and more importantly, get a decent amount of sleep. The calendar committee, made up of teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators from all schools, took into consideration the mental health of students when they recommended the week off at Thanksgiving and you blatantly ignored their recommendation. Instead, one board member called the week off hostile because of childcare issues. Really? I'm pretty sure our working families have to address childcare for every break during the school year and for summer, but these two days made it hostile. The LVUSD community is always cognizant of working families and tries to accommodate them. We have an excellent partnership with the Boys and Girls Club and they are definitely open those two days. Childcare is important, but the district must start focusing on the mental health of our students. In addition, I want to address the fact that you also went against the calendar committee when you decided to move spring break to align with more religious holidays. Mental health played a huge part in the committee's recommendation on this as well. The end of the year is a grueling stretch. Keeping students energized and motivated is more difficult after spring break, especially for our seniors. Stress levels are extremely high due to school-wide testing, AP testing, and finals exams. Having spring break nine weeks from the end of the year was strategic for success. It separates the final semester evenly, rather than having a 10 to 11 week run without a break. This is not best for students or teachers. I, as well as all LVUSD teachers, would like to partner with the board and request that you reconsider the calendar decision for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 school years for the mental health of students and respect the valuable opinions, research, and hard work of the professional educators who served on the calendar committee. They put students first when making their recommendations, not childcare or religion. Thank you.
Laura Greco?
My name is Laura Greco and I've been teaching math at the high school for 18 years. Thank you for your time and consideration in listening to all of the stakeholders involved in various district-wide issues. I share with you the need to balance education, family, and school attendance. While there are several reasons that the recent calendar decision should be reconsidered, I have chosen the three that I believe are most important. First, I see great value in starting the school year on a Thursday. While it would be ideal to hit the ground running on the first day, this is often unrealistic. As thoroughly as administrators, counselors, and teachers plan, the start of school can be chaotic. At a, at the secondary level in particular, there are always scheduled changes for students, sixth and ninth graders adjusting to a new school campus, teachers learning over 100 new student names, and the list goes on. A two-day preview for students is helpful to get a glimpse of their new six to eight, or six to eight new courses, to meet their six to eight new teachers, to familiarize themselves with class policies, to orient themselves to new learning platforms and websites, to decide if they are going to continue with their sport, to level up or down into an honors or AP course, and to communicate with parents, teachers, and counselors regarding scheduling concerns. These two days and a weekend thereafter allow everyone to breathe, to collect themselves, and then truly hit the ground running the following Monday. Second, a week-long Thanksgiving holiday is a welcome adjustment to our calendar, supported by most staff and many students. Contrary to the notion that taking these two days off may be hostile to working parents, it must be made clear that there are 180 school days in the calendar, however it is distributed in the year. That means, no matter what, there will always be 185 days where working parents must either stay home or find childcare. Further, creating a three-day week during the Thanksgiving holiday may actually be seen as a hardship toward LVUS teachers and staff who have children enrolled in surrounding districts. Due to a shortage of substitute teachers, we are not allowed to take personal necessity days backed up to a district holiday. So, while CAPO Unified, Battleback Unified, J. Sarah, and Sage Hill all have the entire week off during Thanksgiving, our teachers and staff will need to find childcare. My final point, and to me, the most important point, is the lack of attention given to the findings of our calendar committee. In addition to our teaching, coaching, and counseling duties, many, many of us volunteer countless hours participating on committees. We do this with the hopes that our perspective, our professional opinions, and our career-long experiences and expertise in working with students in the classroom will be valued and taken into consideration to make Laguna Beach Unified a better place for everyone. While I may be wrong in watching the last board meeting, it did not feel to me that much attention was given to the calendar that was recommended by our committee. For the reasons I just outlined and many more, I would like to request that the board reconsider its decision for the 24, 25, and 25, 26 calendars and subsequent years and respect the recommendation of our district calendar committee. Thank you for your time.
April Kaufman?
Good evening, April Kaufman. I teach here at Thursday Middle School. I'm also a parent, my boys are here, my husband's at work. So, I'm speaking on behalf of being a teacher and a parent. I'm really just echoing what the others have already said. My boys go to Boys and Girls Club after school every day. It's been a saving grace for us. They are open for the minimum days, the non-student days, even back-to-school night for members and non-members. They, we have such a strong partnership with them at this district. It's unlike anything I've seen. I spent 15 years in my prior district and the support that we provide for the families is beyond anything I've seen. And I think that we really need, that we have considered the, the concerns that the board had with our calendar regarding parents and childcare issues. That is a great opportunity and I was speaking with Danny, the operation director there today and he's like, just tell us. There are phone call away, they even will send staff members to the school sites to help our parents. So, I just want to reiterate that and, you know, as a teacher, we have responsibilities to be on other committees and adjunct duties. I'm on several each year myself and we do spend a lot of time making the recommendations for our different committees and we, you know, meet after-school hours all throughout the school year. So, this calendar committee that came up with these recommendations is very well-thought process, considering all the different concerns that you've had and I feel that we have addressed them. We really hope that you would reconsider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Jeff Dipple?
Hi, my name is Jeff Dipple and this is my 10th year here teaching Spanish and we're going to meet Unified. I want to say that the calendar where we, the teachers had discussed for the week off during Thanksgiving was a rare opportunity for almost unanimous agreement between teachers and students here that have been beach unified for something we all felt was better, not only for students, but for the teachers as well. One of the reason being is that the first semester is now substantially longer than it ever has been. When I first started here almost 10 years ago, we started after Labor Day. It made the process of teaching significantly easier because everybody had something to look forward to and it wasn't as much time before a break. In my experience teaching middle schoolers now for 14 years, 10 here in four in Los Angeles, after about eight to nine weeks, kids really start to lose engagement and teaching becomes practically impossible. During the two days prior to Thanksgiving, just kind of a window into what that is like, there's numerous absences on those two days, which makes teaching practically impossible. Also, it creates an excessive amount of makeup work for teachers that is very challenging to do between the time after Thanksgiving and Christmas. Engagement is extremely low, so what, you know, where there might be children in the classroom, they're not necessarily paying attention or wanting to do anything at all. And, you know, last but not least, I really feel like teacher mental health and student mental health really needs to be considered. When you look at almost three to four weeks longer in this first semester, it really can be a very difficult time until you get to the vacation. So, the, the week off was really a chance to kind of reset and get everything ready before the end of the first semester. I would hope that you would reconsider the calendar because, again, as I mentioned previously, it's something that was almost unanimously agreed upon, staff is a really good idea and that is definitely a rare occurrence in the teaching world. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nikki Romano?
Okay. I promise to be short because this is not my favorite thing to do, but as a member of the calendar committee, I felt strongly to come up and say a few words. We did take over multiple meetings, a lot of time to take into consideration all of the stakeholders involved, the students, the staff, the community in one, in the recommendation that we made for the calendar committee. So, I just wanted to say that, that sitting here and during that meeting when the discussion was happening, it was disheartening to not be referred back to what the recommendation from the calendar committee was. So, I just would like to ask that in the future, that maybe that some more weight be given to the time and efforts that the staff put into making those recommendations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Fred Smoller?
Mine is a different topic. It's the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon. I'm a faculty member at Chapman University and some of you might recall about 10 years ago, we brought houses through the Department of Energy to the Great Park. These are sustainable, solar-powered homes. Well, I was able to get a $5 million grant to create a California competition. This is from the, from the state legislature. There'll still be 15 homes built by university students exemplifying and embodying sustainable principles. But where you guys fit in is that I, my wife is a teacher, so this message has her approval. She said, "Create a program for teachers and don't put any strings on them." So, we are giving small grants, about a thousand bucks, for each teacher in Orange County who brings their kids, their students, to the Orange County Sustainability Decathlon, which will be held at the Costa Mesa Fairgrounds in October 5th through the 15th. And then, we have suggested lesson plans or things to make things easier and we're, whatever teachers think they'd like to have, we'll post it. My goal is simply this, to have for at least one day where as many students and citizens as possible focus on our environment, the challenges of climate change, coastal erosion, drought, all these things. And when it comes to their particular projects, whatever the teachers want to do from K till 12, you know, first graders, if they draw pictures or write letters or whatever a teacher will come up with, I am one of the people that's going to decide and I want to be as broad as possible. So, for you, after you give homework, I hope that you will embrace this thing, see where the legislature is going, and we hope to have it back every two years. And when I went to the staff and the legislature, they said, "Look, we're going to give you $5 million to put this thing together, but we're not going to give any money unless we see local buy-in." And the way in which you buy in is you help me promote it, you send some classes there, and, and you help me improve it. And I don't know who your superintendent is, but I, oh, hi, Mr. Superintendent, but I, I passed out a form and I can send, I think I sent that, the PDF, to the, to communications person. So, let teachers see it, they're not interested, I get it. I'll just give you my card and let you...
Thank you. Next. Mary Van Orman?
My attorney, a parent of a student, former student at Laguna Beach High School, a type 1 diabetic. And what I think, I've sent some handouts to everyone here on the board, as well as other members, to show you what schools are required to do for type 1 diabetics. The Laguna Beach High School failed my son, did not give him the necessary things and I'd like to be on the agenda so I can show the schools what we need to be doing for type 1 diabetics. I think the quote, I got two emails from the principal that said that type 1 diabetes is a crutch. It's a very horrible disease. My son was perfectly healthy for 13 and a half. He got this disease and if you look at him, it's an invisible disease. And so, what I think is interesting is that we, people don't know, it was a couple of times they couldn't find him at school. The other time, police were called because when your blood sugar is really high, you're confused, you don't know what's going on. And handcuffs were actually put on my son. I did have to move him to a different school. I'm still waiting on his transcripts. But I'm proud to tell you, my son got into UCLA, as well as UC Berkeley and every college that he applied to. Unfortunately, not being able to have the transcripts, he hasn't been able to get into Berkeley. But I think it's something we need to show all parents. You shouldn't have to have a mom as a lawyer to fight for your child. It's a disability, it is some things that need to be done. We need to be inclusive and make sure everyone is educated because kids die. I don't know if you guys are aware, but Senate Bill 97 indicates that you're supposed to be posting and letting all the parents know the signs of a type 1 diabetic. I think it's important, we want to be inclusive, we want to get people talking about this and we want to make sure no kid is left behind because my kid was. And I don't think a principal making comments about the fact it's a crutch, it's not a crutch, it's a disability, one of the American disabilities. And that's not something we should take lightly. I'd like to get on the agenda and help this school so we can help other parents, not only with type 1 diabetes, but autism, any other disease that they're entitled to. Thank you.
Next speaker. Derek Day?
Okay, hello everyone, Derek Day, Laguna Beach Water Polo Foundation. I want to commend the district on your leadership in getting the facilities master plan going with the city. The city's been sitting on us for years and it's until you guys got this thing that we're alive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Gary Kasich?
Good evening, my name is Gary Kasich, representing sensible Laguna and over 2,000 readers and also commenting on the facilities master plan. We hope you appreciated the joint meeting with the city council last week. We thought it was pretty productive. Thank you for your active participation. It was certainly a great deal of community interest and a great turnout, standing room only. We're hoping you earnestly consider comments from both the community and the council as you continue to work on the facilities master plan. While certainly not a formal commitment to the, from the council, there was certainly strong support from the city to evaluate a second community pool. Hopefully, that will add some clarity to the aquatics evaluation and allow you to narrow down the options under consideration. We've shared as a group considerable materials with this board, as well as with the city council, city staff, and other interested community groups. We've responded to invitations, holding meetings with city council members, city staffers, city committees, and other resident-led organizations. We continue to meet with industry experts, consultants, and other schools in the area. We're still hoping for an invitation from this board to review our input in an open, interactive exchange of ideas to find a solution for our kids. We're looking forward to the June 27 workshop. Toward that end, it would be extremely helpful if you, if the board or staff could publish clarity on what options are currently still under consideration. The last formal statement at the May workshop was that all options, including all original proposals, were still viable solutions. Options presented at the open house held in early May at the high school were not included in the May 23 workshop. So, there's some confusion in the community as the wish options are still under consideration. It would be helpful if we could focus, if we could all focus on, on the right things so that the next meeting is a productive and a valuable and time-efficient use of everyone's time and we're not spending time making comments on topics that are not, no longer under consideration. Finally, and as a follow-up to the main meeting, there's a commitment to post and answer all questions that did not get answered during that meeting because there were several of them and there's only so much time. I'm curious if that was done, because it's difficult to tell from the FAQ's if all, if they've been updated or not because there's no timestamps on them. If they have, just let us know because several members of the community are asking us when their questions are going to be answered and we can point them to the website. That's the best place for it, that way there's no confusion in what the answer was. We had a conflict tonight, we'd love to stay and see the rest of the meeting, but we've got one of these groups to meet with tonight, so we'll be back online as quick as we can. Have a good meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Now, several action items under the business section, section six. First is approval of the going to be unified school district local control accountability plan, the LCAP, for the year ending June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. We bring forward our LCAP, which we presented back on May 25th to share sets of data and actions in alignment with our previous three-year, three-year one. And this is will be your three of three. We've received one comment, which we shared with the board in last week's weekly update regarding support for dyslexia obstruction, which is already included in our plan and upcoming training. So we're bringing forward our final draft of the LCAP for your approval.
Any public comment on this?
No.
Thank you. Any board questions? Ask for a motion? Any discussion? We need a roll call voice. So for Kelly Osbourne, do we need? They're not coming in. Yes, are we? How will we know if she has a question or discussion or? Okay, so she's on all the time? Okay, thank you. Okay, so then roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. The second item, approval of the 2023-24 All Funds Final Budget. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. Yes, this is the same budget that was presented last meeting as an information item. However, if you recall, I did identify the governor's may revision is going to affect the fund balance. So before you tonight, I created a handout of the preliminary budget with the components of ending fund balance, followed by tonight's approval of the all funds budget and components of ending fund balance. And you can see I've highlighted the difference in the art music discretionary block grant as well as the learning recovery block grant. You can see what the reduction based on the governor's may revision would do to our fund balance, which still remains very positive and very strong. It just is reflecting a lower revenue from those two grand amounts, which at this point is is more than likely the worst case scenario as the Senate and the Assembly negotiate their budget with the governor going forward. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you. Any board questions? You have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Appreciate you presenting that as the the worst case, and then hopefully it will go the other way when they get through with their work up in Sacramento. Roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is approval of resolution 23-08 Education Protection Account, the EPA.
Thank you. The education protection account was established in November of 2012, and it was via Proposition 30. And if you recall, at the time, the state was facing a fairly dramatic cut to the state budget and subsequently the educational budget. So voters passed top 30, which extends a minimum of $200 per average daily attendance to districts to help cover what would have been the shortfall. Over 2016, it was then extended with Proposition 55. And so we provide this annual report that is stipulated in both that the funds received from this award, this grant, must be spent on classroom instruction. You can see it equates about half a million dollars for our district and allocate it to regular teacher instruction and benefits.
Thank you. Any public comment? Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? I don't have a motion, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. Oh, the last item in this section, D, approval to award contract to Mariposa Landscapes, Inc. for grounds maintenance services on a unit cost basis for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. This is our landscape maintenance throughout the district. As if you recall, for the past nine years, Brightview Landscape has been the provider that you've seen serving the schools. However, in this bid go around, Mariposa was the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So we're recommending a word for their services. It is a unit cost bid, so it does not preclude us from using other vendors for these same services, but it does ensure that we are receiving the most competitive prices for the regular work that we do throughout the district all year. I would take any questions.
Thank you. Any public comment?
No.
Board questions? Motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Any board discussion? Now, I ask for a roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. You know, several action items and instruction. Seven A, approval of course of studies for Laguna Beach Unified School District Secondary Schools for the 2023-24 school year. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Each year, Thurston Middle School and LBS bring forward their course studies to board approval as required under code. These course studies also include any new courses recommended by our curriculum council. Curriculum council review process provides for substantial teacher involvement along with parents and other members of the community. Through through the curriculum council meetings this year, which there was one in one in January, one in May, they're actually bringing forward six new courses, AP Human Geography, AP Chemistry, Intermediate and Advanced Guitar, Storytellers Workshop, Work Experience, and Mock Trial. Those are ones that are all about for this year to add to the high schools courses study to bring this forward to you for your review tonight.
Any public comment?
No.
Board questions?
Yes. Could you explain the curriculum for human geography, please?
The College Board is the one that puts kind of the curriculum for AP Human Geography. So it's it aligns that aligns across a lot of topics, but it's aligned with that one as long as with the AP Human Geography test that they take in May.
But more specifically, what what all does it cover? I mean, I understand it it aligns with you see, what does it do?
I don't have the actual outline of the course in front of me, but it covers a host of topics across global movement and global movement and migration and just a whole host of different topics related to to world events and global studies that they eventually assess them. Usually this part of, yeah, that would be included as well as that. And and I'm happy to share the course outline with you if you'd like to see that.
So I'll go through a few of them. Thinking geographically, population migrate migration patterns and processes, cultural patterns and processes. So that's the focus on why language, religion, other cultural practices spread over space and time. Political patterns and processes, again, same kind of concept of politics. Agricultural role use environment, patterns and processes. Cities and urban land use patterns and processes, again, the environment's heavily involved in that. And then last but definitely not least, industrial and economic development patterns and processes. Again, so it's a global concept related to all those different areas. And it's built as really as a ninth grade introductory class, giving them also the same time AP skills. So how to study for AP, how to prepare for AP. So it's one, it's a great ninth grade class that is really offered as a way to just kind of introduce students to what it would be like to be in an AP down the road. And as a ninth grade class, it's an offering that, you know, to kind of spread out AP offerings too for students if they're find some interest in it. So it covers a great scope of of work. It's not one that, you know, some districts try to do it in a semester. That's that's a pretty big left to try to accomplish in a semester you can. But we're going to do it over the course of the year so that allows some more deeper understanding and learning in these areas. But there's a lot of interweaving of environment and societal moves and why things aren't the way they are across the world, right? So it's a fantastic class as introduction to social studies.
Thank you. That does sound good.
Will it only be open for ninth grade?
It's actually open for any grade nine through 12. Obviously, we're kind of in the in the midst of looking at ethnic studies for next the following year. So we'll figure that how ethnic sites may weave into this moving forward as well. So but for the current time, it's it's nine through 12. We have some ninth and 10th graders enrolled in, I believe, for next year. And we'll, as we continue to process for global studies, let that evolves too, which will be next year when we do course of study. We'll we'll be bringing that forward and kind of have a longer discussion with the board around that class in particular.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Floria, clearly here, can a student opt out of taking global studies and take AP Human Geography instead, or we need to change graduation requirements prior to that?
No, it satisfies the requirement. It'd be similar to taking AP European History in lieu of the World History requirement.
Okay. And then my second question was, is it being taught out of the social studies department?
Yeah, it's a social studies specific course. It falls in the history and social science class. So it'll be taught by a history teacher or credential teacher.
Now, I guess my my third item was a comment, not really a question, but we had a a comment from a member of the public last meeting about just a question on how many honors and AP courses we are offering in the district. So I really like seeing these additional two courses that are weighted either honors or AP level. I think I've numbered up 35 that were on the report for approval tonight, bringing essentially our total up to 37. About the seat of course. So anyhow, thank you. And I'd like to encourage our counselors and other advisors on ways to try and get students to actually take the course and know about it.
Okay. Do you have a motion, please?
Second.
Discussion.
Um, I would just like to recommend or at least look at the curriculum committee in terms of it. It appears to be a standing committee in that it meets every year for a specific subject. New curriculum and those standing committees should be open to anybody, not to be on the committee, but to be able to watch and listen. And I know the, you know, one of the most important jobs of the board is approving curriculum. And to not know very much about it is is kind of hard. And it's hard to explain it to parents when parents ask. So I don't think very many people would come, but I think to just open it up and let other people hear, you know, why there is a need for this and why we are choosing to do this.
I mean, I'd say not a board committee, so it's not something that may be required to be like any of the standing committee meetings that we have district-wide, but that would be if the board wishes to change the process, we can bring that back or for the discussion at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know one of one of the things that happened to me this year was just getting questions. And this wasn't necessarily on the curriculum committee maybe, but about all the books that were chosen for flow. And I had a hard time answering them because I I didn't even know what all the books were. So then I asked Dr. Floria, I got the books, I read them, so I could answer that. But answer those questions and talk with people about it. But I I think if we are making decisions about curriculum, we need a little more information.
If I can just, I'm always happy to help answer those questions for you if you want to know. Like there's when you're thinking kindergarten through 12th grade, all subject areas. Like it's taken me a career to learn all the curriculum across all those areas, and I'm still learning more. And books evolve and courses evolve, and I have to learn more. So I wouldn't want you to feel like you have to know all that. Almost nobody does. Okay. But I'm always happy to talk to you about, we can share course outlines and and more information, and teachers are always happy to share as well.
I just want to compliment the administration for the depth and quality of the curriculum that we have. I mean, I also, Mrs. Osborne's comment about that we'll have 37 AP classes if these do get approved. Plus, we have a host slew of honors classes, but we're such a small district, it's very impressive as far as the depth and quality of the curriculum.
I think that I hear I hear your question, Member Perry, but I think it's also when we see these new courses, as Dr. Mayberry said, you know, you could ask to have that material ahead of time if you feel that you need to know more about it before it comes to us for a vote. I know it's a different question than what you're asking about observing the process, but as far as having that knowledge for tonight, I mean, you you know that we can ask for those things ahead of the meeting. I know we're all we're all busy, and I know it catches up with us, but, you know.
Right. And
I think that's what Dr. Mayberry is saying, is that he would be glad to provide it if we if we say that we'd like to see it.
True. I and I would try to do that, but I would just think for a new class, we'd have a little bit more of a class description.
Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is approval of proposal to pilot Panorama Educational Educations Multi-Tierred Systems of Support MTSS Software Program for the 23-24 school year in an amount not to exceed 28,800.
Thank you. Yeah, this past year, a selection committee with representatives from each schools MTSS team and the from instructional services reviewed software platforms to help more efficiently filter across multiple data systems, assessment, coursework, behavior, attendance data, all the different things that our school-based MTSS teams work on on a regular basis. These are really important for MTSS framework. And so we use a couple of different, sometimes the spreadsheets, we use Aries a little bit, we use illuminate. We want to review some of the different new platforms that are out there. This the selection committee chose Panorama MTSS platform to pilot for next year that they think will provide a lot more efficiencies. It's currently being implemented in 2,000 school districts across the country, 25,000 schools. I think there's over 200 in California. And so they're recommending helping this to pilot this next year and see if this helps provide a little bit more real-time data that they can look at when they're meeting each week or or any other times that they're talking about our students that are in most of the
Thank you. Public comment on this? No questions? A motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any board discussion?
I I have been looking at Panorama for a while now, and I'm really excited that we are going this direction. I think it works well for our district. Thank you.
Okay, we hear some of the comments from our teachers tonight. It's obvious that we need to continue focusing on opportunities in this area for support for students. So if there's no other discussion, ask for a roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is approval of service agreement with Learner Center Collaborative, LCC, for the 23-24 school year in an amount not to exceed 63,000. Mayberry?
Thank you. This is the third one we're bringing forward today in the action section. This this one, Learner Center Collaborative, is who we partnered with the last about 15 months around our learner profile to build out our new portrait of a graduate. We did a presentation to the board back in April on that and some of the work that they've accomplished so far. And our staff was recommending that we bring them back and continue that partnership. This came out of our LCAP advisory, actually, I think, two years ago now, and has led to this development of a learner profile, some learner progressions and what that looks like at each grade level. This year, we had a leadership pathway. This year, we had a leadership pathway with the staff from all four schools. And then we met, they also facilitated a workshop for staff on our district-wide PD days in March, as well as in August last year. And so I will share later, but there, the approval of that leadership pathway, which was a really, really cool engaging experience for a lot of the staff at all four schools was that a hundred percent said that they enjoyed it and wanted to continue. It was kind of a design team around different ways to make, to make resources for teachers related to this Learner Center approach. And so this, this contract for next year would include more workshops for staff in August, District-wide PD Day. Another leadership design pathway for more staff to be part of, where they meet four times throughout the year, as well as online in between. Some instructional leadership sessions with our school and district leaders. And there as well, as well as twenty license to their online platform that's designed to just access some a secretness learning courses. So we're bringing forward this recommendation from our instructional services staff for your review.
Thank you. Any public comment? More questions? I had a question. Where it mentions a community, virtual community practice sessions for fifty participants, does that staff or does that go out into non-staff and actual community members?
It's current, right now, the way it's set up is currently for people who join that leadership pathway, which would be staff. But we could certainly look into other options. Right now, it's, it's set up so that they meet four times throughout the year. And then in between, they would get together virtually, like maybe for an hour, or it might be, you know, that's one team over at Thurston, as it says, you know, we're working on this one part with our classes. And can we jump on a Zoom call with learners and our collaborators to talk this through with you? So it provides kind of these different, different ways that the school size can access it.
So community then is school community.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not asked for motion, please.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I think it's very impressive that a hundred percent of the staff thought this was really valuable and we should go with.
Roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes, thank you. We have action items under superintendent. This is approval of a minutes. We had one member absent, so we need to do this as a separate item. We need a motion and a second for the minutes for the June first, twenty-twenty-three board recognition meeting.
Some move?
Did not ask for public comment on this, but I'm assuming there's none. So we have, roll call for this, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes.
And Clerk Osborne, you are at abstention, correct?
Yes, because I was not present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have consent calendar, so are there any items on the consent, well, ask for public comment first on consent calendar. Any, either of you, I see, or Kelly can also do it. Throw all items from the consent calendar. And then I'd ask for motion to approve consent calendar items C through Z.
Some move?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes, thank you. We have a presentation, information presentation on our after-school programming update. You should ask public comment on this. On this information item.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, Steph was brought forward this update on our after-school programming. The board has had some questions regarding potential opportunities to expand our after-school programming for students, especially at the elementary level, so we want to bring an update and for, and, and get your thoughts or answer any questions. So cur- currently, we have a couple, couple of different after-school programs at the elementary, which is what we'll focus on today. And we'll kind of share some of the things that we're thinking about for next year. Okay, oh, I'm done. I'm all done. Thank, thank, thank you. So the, the first one is why to briefly mention, as we do have our expanded learning opportunities program. And Dr. Kennerberg has been essential at keeping that up and running. That was a recent grant from, from the state that provides after-school opportunities for students through six P M. at night, as well as thirty-nine school days. That's grant funded. We partner with the Boys and Girls Club for that, so students receive that, that qualifying, eligible for, receive that free of charge. They do a wide variety of activities there. This year, we have seventy-four students that, that were part of that program. And that, and that is TK through five. We then have a, our after-school program that School Power helps coordinate with us. That is at each elementary school, Monday through Thursday, or an hour class afterward. They offer a variety of enrichment classes. That's, as I'm sure you've heard, it's wildly popular. The cost of the classes are anywhere from three to could be a hundred dollars, could be two hundred dollars, just a wide variety of options based on the class supplies. The range of things, and then they have financial assistance that's available for that. This past year, participants, we had six hundred and fourteen K through five students participated in at least one class. So quite a few of our students, the vast majority of them, I think that's close to seventy-five percent of our elementary students. The average participants per day on those four days was a little bit more, or at top of the world, elementary of one hundred and thirty-nine students and Alboral, one hundred and five students. So very busy program, very popular. A couple of things that we're exploring this year to expand that would be potentially expanding the Wednesday class that currently ends. Because that's an early release for the elementary school that ends at one-twenty, so the classes go to two-twenty. We're looking at possibly extending that to three-twenty, so that it aligns that they have the same end time off for those days. We're also looking at different ways to reduce the weeks in between the sessions. Each of these session classes are maybe six to seven weeks, depending on what the calendar falls, it could be up to eight weeks. So finding ways to reduce some of those weeks in between sessions so that kids are able to take classes, maybe more classes, or take classes a little bit longer throughout the year. And then the other thing we're looking at, we've had staff, onsite staff that has supported the, the program and help coordinate, because there's, you have different vendors coming in, different staff coming in, School Power, obviously, their staff and Phyllis help coordinate a lot of that. We also have someone on our staff that helps as things troubleshoot and come up. And so we've been looking to expand that role, so that they are there the entire time, not just coordinating different things and making support because it's grown so much the last couple of years. So that's the, the K-five program. And then the last one that I want to share tonight, and our director, Kim Johnson's not here tonight. But we're looking at potentially extending, doing an extended day program for our TK classes. You know, our TK class, we have a late start and early start. The early start, which starts at the regular time around eight o'clock, that ends around eleven-thirty, and then those students go home. We know there's some interest from our families on extending that day, and so we were just wanting to extend that so that aligns with the other ones, supposed to three-twenty. Of course, the late, the late start families as well, they could stay for that extra hour as well. And so we would hire someone at each school, we would need at least one person, depending on the interest, to coordinate that program as well as the spacing. Kim Johnson went and looked at, who's run these programs in her previous district, went and looked at costs. These are actually in line with costs at almost all the districts, probably about right in the middle to help offset that cost. Right now, our TKs are looking like we'll have about twenty students at each school, ten early start, ten late start. We're expecting, we know at least for the extended day, one that would begin around eleven-thirty, that we, we know in school that about five to six or seven parents have expressed interest in extending that day, so not all of them, but we start with a smaller group. And so this kind of gives a chance for those students to have a full day in a different way. That kind of sums, sums up the, the three different, or well, two different programs we have, as well as possibly a TK extended day program that we're looking at. And so I just wanted to bring this, share this with you if you have questions or want to get feedback on some of the things you're thinking related to the programs we currently run. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. So if Wednesday went longer, so they all got out at the same time, would students be taking two classes on Wednesday or would be one long class or do we not?
It would likely be one long class, just because the transition, especially with lower elementary kids, like that transition takes a lot of time. Kids are moving around, we want to minimize the transition. And talking with School Power staff, one of the things we talked about if that happens is that we're going to be really thoughtful about which classes are offered on that Wednesday, right? They could, of course, have a break, not going to be in class for two hours at that age level. But what ones lend themselves to being longer on a certain topic or a certain activity versus ones that are easier fit into an hour long?
Okay, and these students were able to get their first choice for after-school classes, or what percentage?
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to get back to on that one. I know they're constantly updating the courses to see if we could align with what families need. But I don't have that with me right now.
That's okay. I know some of the free classes are more popular and they fill up. I just wondered, and then if, if for the TK extended program, if, if maybe there's only two children, would we still offer that?
That's a good question. I think that's what we would want to look closely at the cost of that, is it worth the cost? We know that there's families that are interested in it. Whether they sign up or not, we don't, we won't know. We saw that, it's the same thing we've seen when we worked with our local other preschools. We have some preschools in town that don't do a full-day program, they have, and they, sometimes they only do a half-day based on licenses. Sometimes they do an extended day, and what they're saying is families are wanting, obviously, more and more time, you know, so they're not just there for half a day. And so we, we think we would have enough interest, but we would have to sit down if it's just two kids. That would be really hard to fund a program with just, with just two, so.
I just think
That's a good question, real quick.
Go ahead.
Do we have TK enrollment numbers for next year? And if so, do we have a sense of how many families would be interested in, in the extended TK day, and we don't have to have them right now, but maybe we can look at that in the, in the future, because we probably already have a fair amount enrolled, so we know what the demand might be.
Yes, we would, we currently, I mean, I guess I, last I checked was right before school year ended, but I think we were around eighteen or nineteen at top of the world. And then twelve or thirteen at Alboral. However, this year, what we did differently is we created a waitlist for families that might be interested in doing that, don't fall within those months. So to have, so that the, the class, the different late and early starts are balanced. So if they don't fill up, we have some people on a waiting list that might be interested in, in applying when they're a little bit near the birthdays in May instead of March, right? And so their birthday is close, so we would, we think we're going to end up with around eighteen to twenty at each school. Now, Kim Johnson did survey them and said that, I think, one school, there were seven families that said they'd be interested in extending a day, and they were signed up for the morning session, and I believe the other one was five that had signed up for the morning session. That was done about a month ago. So we think there's enough interest to run up, to run the program.
Okay.
Kelly, do you have other questions or?
I just, I'd like to look at the fiscal impact, so we know you know, if we have twenty per, per school, per site, it sounds like, I'm trying to track, I get her Dr. Mayberry pretty well, but we have twenty per site, and we have some good data on whether they would be interested in that extended day. Then we could probably develop what the fiscal impact would be to provide that, that service, you know, based on the program fees that we saw in the presentation and the staffing cost. I wouldn't want to build it and hope that they come, right? Like have a program that's not, not really mandatory, that, that two or three kids in it and a lot of staff cost.
Thank you. I was wondering, how do we do early and late? I mean, do they, do they pick what they want?
Yeah, they choose which one they have preferred, and then at some point, if it, one fills up, we would say there's the mornings available, or maybe the mornings available at the other school or something like that. So we try to keep them balanced. This first year, top, top of the world, we had one that was really out of balance, and it was really challenging for the teacher to be with just a small group of kids. And so we're trying to, that's why we've added the waitlist this year, so that if there is space, if you end up with one that only has four students, we can bring some more families, students, families that are, are have birthdays that are close and balances out.
Seeing from looking at this, if they, if they wanted their child there longer, they would be wanting to pick the early start because of the hours extended. If they come in later, then they, I don't know whether the, the reverse would start happening, whether people would want a program for their kids to come to before their session if we had limited numbers in each session. Is that, is that a future possibility?
It could be. We've, I, I surveyed that last year when we were expanding to the first expansion of TK to the top of the world. And we actually thought they might be interested in it, and we had, I think, one person that expressed interest by the time the school year had started, so we didn't do a morning one. The Boys and Girls Club was even willing, like, we'll host it, and we'll drive the kids, and we had no interest, because most of the ones that, you know, if they want to come early, they come early, and if they're not rushed to get here at eight, they're like, I'm happy to sign up, I get to come at ten-thirty. They're not really looking for care on the front end of it. And, and Kim Johnson found the same thing when she surveyed families this year as well.
Thank you. And then I just think that we would need to be very clear that the cost, that the charge for the extended care, because the TK is not a charge. So, you know, we want that to be misinterpreted by people, and I'm sure we'll be careful with that, but that's just, looking at that, I wanted to make, it's a very reasonable charge. That's at the hourly rate. Thank you. Any other board questions?
So for us, one of the things that keeps coming up that kind of posed back to the board around bringing this back for further discussion. You see, we haven't identified specific staff. We would need to make, we would need to figure that out, right? We would need to either, A, create another position, right, that's specific to doing this kind of work, because we don't really have necessarily a description that this falls with, falls under. And obviously, look for, you know, a pay scale that would kind of land appropriate, right? So there's going to be a cost to the district that would probably be offset, it would, would be, not probably, it would be offset by any kind of fees we can collect it. Yeah, but I think to remember Osborne's question around, you know, when you're looking at the fees you're charging and the number of students that you're bringing in, you know, what's the board comfortable with around that? I mean, I'm sure we're not getting a commitment, but, you know, we want to bring back something maybe a little more built out that has more specifics around. Okay, we're proposing a job description, and the cost is going to be this. Is the board comfortable in us bringing something back, knowing that there is going to be, you know, a cost to the district? There's no way, you know, even with seven students that might be interested, you're more than likely not going to cover the full cost of an employee in that sense, but are we comfortable bringing something back, knowing that there could be, I guess, my simple question? Are we comfortable bringing something back to the board for further discussion and, and action approval down the line that has our plan kind of built out around this topic?
Any comments on that? I agree, I would be interested in that, in seeing that. I think it's, for young children like that, staying in one place has a real benefit. And I think parents would, would appreciate that as far as. But I, I think you bring up what to me could be another issue is, then we would need them to commit to a specific number of days. In other words, if they're going to have their child every day, or if they only want it three days a week. And if we're, if we're interested in offering a variety like that, or if it only could be an everyday commitment, because that affects your staffing, but it also, you know, because of the requirements with members and, and the staffing ratio at that age. So it's very difficult to have something that has an open flow, you know, you can choose to do it this day or not do it, and but I'm interested in, in pursuing it.
What would it think about the way we sell bus passes? You get it?
Like a lunch? But not like a lunch count. Any other questions or observations from board members?
Member Perry, you comfortable with that? I just want to make sure, because member Osborne can't see you, so I saw you shake your head, but I want to make sure it went to the record for some of Osborne. Okay, so we'll bring back something, probably through July meeting. We'll, we'll spend some time on, we'll need to talk to our associations, make sure Okay, so we'll bring back something, um, probably through July meeting. Um, we'll, uh, we'll spend some time on this. We'll need to talk to, um, our associations, make sure that. They're comfortable with kind of the concepts and, um, because it would be, I think, uh, as you call in and, and the team, we were talking about what that would actually look like in terms of a job description, because this would be something we haven't really engaged in. Um, and you know, what kind of requirements we have. And then, uh, Dr. Mayberry can work with the, the site principles around. Space allocation, obviously, because the space would need to be identified and, um, and how that programming would work. So we've been talking obviously to the side principles around it, but. Um, now we can kind of get into a little more kind of specifics around some of those pieces. So we appreciate your direction.
Thank you. Next item is our information, um, under Superintendent's Division, a presentation on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four LBUSD area of focus.
All right, I'm going to have the principals come and move up into, um. This slide or that slide, however they want to handle it. I think we have one clicker, so they may have to throw it back and forth, but.
They know how to share.
Or you can all share it.
They know how to share. Thank you. Any public comment on this?
All right, um. We did this last year, uh, so thank you, board, um, and staff. It's an opportunity, I think, for us to really celebrate. Kind of where we landed at the end of the year. Um, you know, our principals do a fantastic job providing mid-year updates along the way to the board. Kind of where they're at and some of the work that they're, they're doing. Uh, this really is a kind of an opportunity to kind of culminate. Um, a lot of the work that they've accomplished, what they're most proud of, uh, some great highlights and some of the things that they're looking forward to in the next year. Uh, so we'll, we'll be able to have kind of a multiple approach here because we'll do, uh, elementary, uh, secondary by goal. Uh, Dr. Mayberry will do, uh, goal three, uh, Jeff, or Jeff will do, I'm strict, and we'll do sustainability and then I'll, I'll kind of wrap it up at the end. So. Um, again, you know, this is our way of being as focused as we can be in all the work that goes on in the school district. And as we all recognize, there's just a lot of challenges that we face year in, year out. Um, but I'm really proud of the work that they've accomplished this year, specific to, um, their intervention systems. And I think they're very proud of that as well and should be, MTSS systems that, um, at each school site, the, the SCL support. And then clearly the work we've done around sustainability this year, just kind of getting, um, getting that ball rolling is really important. So this, you've seen this, this is a little different graphic. Um, this is, uh, this is the old Venn diagram, um. And, uh, of all of the work that we've been doing around the three goals, obviously the fourth goal not in the, the Venn is the sustainability at work. Uh, that's been board identified. Uh, these are the L cap goals as you just approved tonight. So I will pass it off to talk about the TK school outcomes and the college accreditedness skills, uh, which was goal one and kick us off is the elementary.
A lot of highlights this year, so it was hard to just focus on a few of them. And these are the major ones across both campuses that we were really proud of, um, relative to our accomplishments. And one of the refinement of our tier three multi-tiered system of support or MTSS program. Um, as you may recall, we, we did a, a huge overhaul of that last year with adding, um, a math TOSA. And then should we really hone in on that tier three, uh, system of support for getting those kids, closing the academic gap. Um, with ELA and that kids that were performing, um, below grade level. And we'll give you that data later. Our second one was the refinement of what we call our CAST support team, and that's our collaborative academic support team. Um, to target academic interventions. In the past, our CAST systems have really met only twice a year. In order to address, um, teachers brought forward concerns on how to help our kids. And this year we integrated that into our MTSS team on a weekly basis. So we were able to provide kids with very quick and timely interventions. And both social emotional learning and academic support. And then we also were really excited about our TK expansion, which was at El Moro, uh, our top of the world this year. We had the, uh, ongoing integration of our VAPA TOSA, and that was wonderful, having Sarah Wolf. Across both campuses. Not only were we able to really integrate our VAPA programs into curricular areas. But we found that Sarah and that, that position was really integral in reaching some of our kids who may not have always been as connected. As some of our other kids, uh, she opened her lab during recess time and we found that a lot of our kids went in to spend time with her during that, that. Period of time. And then lastly, we had our unit redesign and I want to again, give a shout out to Mike Morrison for all the effort that he put into creating this. Uh, overall, we had thirty-three of our elementary teachers voluntarily participate in redesigning the lessons to make them more rigorous, uh, relevant, engaging. And applicable to, to just life in our community. It was also so successful that we had eleven of our teachers that ended up signing up for our second round of that unit design. So we're, we're really proud of those accomplishments there. And thanks again, Mike. We had thirty-three teachers and then another eleven of those signed up to, um, do a second unit design. And as Megan and I were walking through the classes, the, the teachers were so prideful in their delivery of lessons and the kids just, they had fun. And we could really tell that the level of, of engagement and learning was, was much higher, uh, with the design lessons.
So I'm just going to run through some of the data really quickly. Thank you. It's good to see everyone. Um, so as Julie alluded to, we're, we're really proud of our MTSS results. Specifically what we saw with moving students out of the tier three, which would be multiple grade levels below and requiring intensive supports for mastery. And seeing an increase in the number of students who are at that tier one or at grade level. Um, the numbers which are not visible, even if it, even if they were written, they would be too small to see from here. But we went from fifty-one percent to eighty-four percent meeting at the grade level, which is tier one. Uh, the typical model for an MTSS that you'll often hear referenced in the pyramid is eighty percent, fifteen percent, five percent. So being able to be at eighty-four percent is something we're really proud of. We were able to reduce our tier two from forty-one percent to twelve percent by the end of the year. And these are our reading, uh, reading rates. And then our red or tier three were cut in half from eight percent to four percent. So, um, again, these are just data points that we, this speak to the work that the, we're doing across the classrooms and with the intervention. This shows you the data disaggregated by grade level and it's, um, something that, again, it's a point of pride that we, that we are seeing these great results. It's also a great data point for us to look at as we think about where we'll go next. And Julie will speak more about that. But we're able to look at this and really question, okay, what, why are we seeing successes in some places at a higher rate than in other places? Or where can we push the needle even more? Because we want to see every student move. You know, if they're in red, we want to move them to yellow and then to green. And if they're in green, we want to figure out how we're pushing them to continue to achieve and grow. Um, both in their personal abilities and their interests or curiosities. So this data really does help with us digging into that. This is our math data, which is, um, again, just something that we're really proud of. And so of course, we're going to brag on our teachers and our students and all the work that they did. Our math data shows that at the end of the year, we were able to get to eighty-one percent proficient. Eighteen percent is in that tier two category, which is classroom-based intervention, some reteaching. And we were able to get down to only two percent requiring the intensive intervention. Um, so just a lot of hard work to get there. And then this shows you where the percentages are by grade level again. And, um, you can just see that. The number of students, we are down to only three students in the fifth grade who are requiring the intensive intervention in math. Um, and that's just something that we want to take a moment to brag about, honestly. It's exciting to see our students doing so well in the, in the areas of math and reading. There's some, I think, if you look at like specific grade levels and, um, different like in reading or math. But it's pretty similar and a lot of, because we're doing so many of the same services and supports. We look at it in many ways in the aggregate. And then as we think about what we're going to do individually, as we move into the next year and planning. We'll start to disaggregate and then still be thought partners in how I might approach, for instance. My fourth and fifth grade cohort versus maybe her second, third, something like that.
This is an example of our tier three intervention services for El Moro in both math and ELA. So you can see that we've serviced in math, there are forty-seven students across the school year and we ended the school year with zero students in the tier three intervention program. So I'm going to give a shout out by me to, um, Maddie Crogman, um, to Amy Broomer and also Michelle Barker. There are math and TSS team for that extraordinary work. And then when you look at our ELA, we service fifty-seven students and we ended the year with twelve students in the tier, tier three support. Many of the students are meeting their goals per IEPs and five oh fours, um, but just still need a little bit extra support. But both, uh, you can see we, we reduced our, those students significantly, meaning those interventions. So I was moving forward, um, in, in looking at where our data points are and, and where we may need to focus next year. Um, we've done again extraordinary work with that tier three. We want to move into the next logical space, which would be to really focus on that tier two. So that we can move more of our tier two students, um, into that tier one grade level performance band, um, during our whatever I need time. Which both of our schools are, are implementing next year. We also want to look at expanding enrichment activities for students in tier one during that wind time. So not only focusing on the interventions for students that may not be performing, but those who are and how we can extend and apply their learning in different ways. Uh, we'd like to maintain our coaching model with our instructional coach and technology and have them focus in on helping in that tier two instructional, uh, pit block. We would like to again, continue the TK expansion. As the, uh, we, we get more kids that are able to be qualified for that. And then finally, we are looking forward to expanding our integrated arts program with our Prop twenty-eight funding. So both of our schools will have a full-time VAPA TOSA. Um, and we're looking forward to how we can bring in some more theater, dance, arts, uh, within that VAPA TOSA.
I'll get it to you. All right. So I, I know at the beginning of this year, I was sharing a little excitement around some of the goals and things that we were working on, uh, under the umbrella of goal one. Um, with our professional learning communities and, and establishing routines for data protocols. Um, our tutorial model that we were looking to, looking for ways to offer more flexibility and targeted interventions. Which will allow for more student-staff choice, as well as, like Julie said, looking for ways to increase enrichment opportunities for our kids. In addition to that, I was also really excited to, um, welcome a new staff member to our counseling team. Knowing the impact that it would have on our students, um, with, you know, proud to share that we nearly had a thousand individual contacts for students this year. Doubled from the year before, as well as the triple of the amount of small group counseling that was offered for emotional regulation and executive functioning groups. Um, eighteen students to fifty-two students this year too as well. And then in addition to that, you know, talk a little bit about our ELA and math interventions. And our hope, which was previously done during zero period to embed them within our schedule this year, so that they were aligned with our elective offerings to offer a more fluid approach. For providing, uh, support for our students within the bell schedule. And then finally, um, our after-school support, which in previous years was kind of designated as a study hall. Um, we've embedded individual and small group tutoring, um, with ELA, math, science, and even some of our special education teachers that were there to support. So out of all of these great things, I chose to look at two particular areas to highlight, um, which would be our tutorial model as well as our ELA and math intervention. So looking at some of the humble beginnings that we had with tutorial, you know, really being treated as a rotational study hall. And knowing that enrichment was very important, uh, during the first semester, we partnered with School Power. And added a ten-week music history experience with the Music Preserves, which was a blend of music education. And live music performances that were occurring outside and alongside on the rotating, um, study hall. While this was happening, we tasked our tutorial lead, Mr. Rothman, who worked very closely with Kelly Shear and April Keller from our Career Technical Education Team. Um, to resurrect our TMS career talks, which is essentially bringing in career experts and speakers from various fields to. Share their journey and experiences with our students. Um, once, um, music preserves ended, we unveiled our TMS career talks from February to May. And with nearly twenty parents and regional experts who facilitated discussions. Uh, around various career fields from, you know, first responder agencies to various medical fields, film producers and writers, engineers. Uh, envi- environmental conservation, architect, architecture and design. And we even had a few sprinkles of the, uh, fashion industry in there as well. Um, it was highly attended with, you know, an average of thirty to fifty students that attended these sessions. Depending on the topic with our last topic around neurobiology by one of our parents, Ursula Kalif, who was a fire marshal, complete sellout, filling every seat. And sofa, a sofa in this building that we're sitting in. Um, while these career talks were taking place in the second semester, we also surveyed our students about tutorial. We had ninety-three percent of those students that were very much in support of that platform, but they had a few hopes for us. They were hoping for a more, uh, enrichment, choice and flexibility, uh, within that time. And so with that, we tasked our academic, uh, committee to conduct an inquiry to cycle to find ways to improve these practices. And so the committee began collecting variety of, uh, best, best practices. They even conducted a school visit at Pioneer Middle School. And, and in, in, and which a school that had a very low tech application and did it with, uh, students that had twice the size. In short, the staff shared their findings, um, with, uh, our group. Introduced a new, uh, newfound flex digital platform, which would allow, um, our teachers and students to have a variety of offerings. As well as track student attendance, which is very important. And ninety-three percent of our staff, um, said, yep, absolutely. Let's move into it next year. And another seven percent said, if we have the right PD and liftoff, um, we'll be ready for it. So knowing that we, being a little biased and knowing that we have the, uh, best, uh, tech team here in the district led by Mr. Andy Crisp, I know that we're excited to lift that off going into next year. For our ELA and math interventions and looking at, uh, a number of our interventions, we saw a lot of growth, especially as we look at the number of students. Who participated this year versus last year. And in our humble beginnings last year, much of the content was based on this iReady My Path, um, computer-based program. Going into this year, our teachers put student engagement at the forefront and, and developed a lot of lessons that are outside of the My Path, um, platform. And some of our mass students looking at citizen math that worked on real word po- problem solving. And our U, uh, ELA department was utilizing a standardized curriculum called REACH, which is a precursor to the Reading One Eighty program. The baseline data that we saw was that approximately, uh, students in math, uh, were at seventeen weeks average for the intervention with one point, uh. Six, seven years of growth with an exit rate of eighty-seven percent. And for our ELA department, we had an average of an eleven-week, uh, intervention time with one and a half years of growth with a seventy percent exit rate in time. Which is some great baseline data for us to build off of as we go into next year. And so some of the things that we're definitely looking forward to, um, is seeing our students and staff utilize a tutorial period more efficiently. Um, I think the digital platform that we'll be utilizing flex will be really helpful in simplifying choices and also tracking students. To ensure that they're attending enrichment or getting targeted support. And in fact, my hope is that our tutorial model will put our ELA and math interventions out of business, knowing that. And hoping that most of our remediation would occur during that tutorial model prior to any potential intervention referrals. And then finally for intervention, you know, we're really excited about having access to new assessment tools. Which would help reduce the duration of time that students are enrolled in an intervention, having that fluid data, um, going in and out. As well as building off on a lot of that teacher create, created curriculum and some of that established standardized curriculum. Um, going into next year. And we hope that in the combination of both of those efforts and tools. That we'll see less and less students requiring skilled remediation, uh, going into next year. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for allowing me to have a little bit of a say in the presentation this evening. I'd like to start by thanking my colleagues at the elementary and middle schools for sending us really well rounded and skill ready students. It makes it makes the work that we have at the secondary level, especially at the high school enjoyable. And and I'm not going to say easier, but it definitely less challenging at times. When we talk about goal one at the high school and we really focus on college and career readiness, I kind of like to put those in three buckets. And we're looking really at support, monitoring progress and student experience. And you could see that some of our highlights really helped us this year focus on nine, ten English Language Arts and Mathematics progress. We did a lot of work as our other school sites did around refining our M T S S intervention process. This involved a real, a lot of real challenging and meaningful conversations with our teaching colleagues around what happens after a student doesn't necessarily master or understand a concept after best first instruction. And for us, that was oftentimes, oh, well, we'll send you off to reading lab or math lab to get the work done. But we wanted to really put our focus on what happens within the classroom after that. You know, student is challenged a little bit more. So we really spent a lot of time on our refining our M T S S process to help that action happen in a classroom. We also really spent time on identifying our neediest students at a variety of levels, whether it was skill deficits in math or language arts, or just kind of transitioning into high school and making sure you complete and turn in your work on time. We we identified a manageable group of students to really work intensely and closely with around those topics so that we could set them up for a more successful high school experience. Additionally, we were able, like my colleague Joe said, we were able to add a lot of support to our learning environment with an additional counselor. And we identified some teachers that were doing TOSA work around focusing on really getting students that were at promise to grade level in the areas of language arts and math. Another thing, obviously, when we talk about college and career readiness is acceleration and skill building opportunities. And one of the data sets that we're really proud of at the high school is our A P exams. As you can see there, we got a record number of A P exams taken by students. And as we go through, you know, smaller enrollment class sizes, we still have really respectable A P numbers. We have eight hundred and forty eight A P exams were taken this year by three hundred and eighty three students. So when you look at that as a student participation rate, forty two percent of our students are participating by taking an A P course and A P exam throughout their high school year. We also really had a great opportunity to focus on our work around flow. And to the right of the slide, while it is a little bit obscure, if you look at it closely, you'll see all the opportunities that students had to really enhance their learning experiences in unique ways. In addition to the learning, they also there also was a call for stewardship for our students to learn how to provide stewardship to their greater school community and beyond that's meaningful and impactful, not only to the environment, which is the focus of flow, but also other pretty significant global issues like food instability and water instability. So we're very proud of that work when we talk about college and career readiness. We also, in monitoring our progress, really relied on our i Ready data story that, which is why I am thankful for the work that my colleagues do at the other schools, because the longer we have our students participate in i Ready assessments, the more story we have around the data and and the focus that we have around where we need to support students that are at promise. I mean, you could see you could see our progression from the red and yellow areas and our growth in the green area, just pretty simple. And if you're like me, I like multiple visual representations of this. So that's where you see our our progress in from our math growth from fall to spring and our and our reading growth from fall to spring. In addition to that, we're really proud of the experiences that our students are able to participate in. I know that we had some brief mentions of honors and A P classes and the number of honors and A P classes that we're able to offer our students with for school and district our size. I think we do a remarkable job of that. But we also really offer some great, unique learning opportunities when we talk to students and enroll them in duly or concurrently enrolled college courses. And you could see the figure there, about twenty two percent of our students are participating in those classes. And again, those really, in my eye, do constitute another tier of honors or college level A P type classes, just without the A P test. These students are exposed to true college level coursework and they have been successful in that. In addition to that, I've shared a little picture of the animatized table that we have in part of our, one of our medical core classes. But our students are also interested and continue to increase their enrollment in career technical education courses. And you can see that this year about thirty seven percent of our students participated in those courses. Also, career and college really readiness courses. And I'm and I'm very, I'm very happy that we're able to offer our students a wide variety of learning experiences that are, I kind of refer to them as non traditional. But the more students are signing up and participating in them, they're becoming part of our traditional course offerings. So for us at the high school, looking forward, we really want to continue our focus on support and what that means for our most challenged or at promise students, right? So we have it, the the joke is, you know, we have a different schedule every year. We have a, we have a new schedule coming up next year that really has allowed us some versatility in student choice, but also in their ability to access supports and services. Like Joe had mentioned around our tutorial, we really want students to drive where they end up in that window of instructional time if they have the luxury of doing so. So I can, if I'm working on a passion project for, you know, one of my courses, I'm going to go maybe spend some time with my mentor or my teacher to advise me on that. If I'm if I'm in need of a review because I want to master a test in in math, my teacher is going to assign me some time to go and see them in that in that time. In addition to that, those are kind of student and teacher driven supports for students. But we also have, we're going to be refining our systems that we're putting in place to support students in the areas of language arts and math specifically. So that when they are, when our neediest students are in need, we'll have a systematized response to being able to support them towards their student success. While they do the handoff. So goal two is fostering social emotional competencies and self identity. And this, again, it's been an ongoing goal for us for many years, and I appreciate the board's support. As you heard both high school and middle school mentioned, the addition of the counselors, which has been a goal and supportive, the board has really put forward over the years, does make a huge difference in their ability to meet the needs of all of our students. So I think you'll continue to see that as an area of growth. And that's another area that we're looking to expand, obviously, at the elementary schools going into next year as well as recognizing that this is a continues to be an area for us. You'll see it interspersed through all goals. And I think that's something we've all talked about is that though these goals look, they, we try to put them in silos. There's the overlap is is extensive. So though we did our best to put them in their little compartments, it doesn't work that way because everything intersects. So again, proud of the work that all the schools did in this area and keep it to.
I get to go first this time. So speaking about the social emotional and how we're attending to that, three things really popped for when Julie and I were reflecting on that specifically restorative practices. And so first of all, thank you to the board for the support with Karen Yonker and that consulting. It helped us to get two cohorts at both our sites fully trained. So we had, and we're probably going to be doing another final cohort cohort in the fall. But it and it's extending beyond classrooms. We have, I can speak to my site, we have our librarian who's trained and has been teaching in the round in the library. We see it in instruction, so there's curriculum circles occurring, there's problem solving circles occurring. It's happening in some classes on a daily basis and many classes on a weekly basis. It's happening in the science lab and approaches to the way kindergartners are doing science. So the restorative practices have really taken root, and so thank you for that. That also speaks to the student voice and choice, because wherever you have that egalitarian circular format, you also have an increase in voice. So students are sitting there and really engaging, not as recipients of knowledge, but as participants and active members of the learning community. Further, I want to, I know Julie already mentioned this, but thank you to Morrison for the support and Chad for the support with the professional development that our teachers have been able to get this past year around unit design. That's also been a way in which we've seen the increase in student voice and choice with exploration of everything from how to engage older students in the elementary around writing to how to embed growth mindset and social emotional learning explicitly and intentionally in some of the classes across an entire grade level. So there's been a variety of topics that have come up, all of which are creating additional voice and choice in the classroom. And then finally, with the integration of our social emotional learning staff. So the counseling team as part of the M T S S team, when we're meeting weekly, we're able to engage them in conversation. So we're really having a holistic approach to what we're talking about with student performance in the classroom and outside of the classroom walls. So again, all of those are some of the highlights we have this year in respect to our social emotional learning and the whole child.
So here are some of our data points in our S E L accomplishments this year. Going back to our restorative practices, you'll see this is our self efficacy screener. We give several S E L screeners, the Kelvin, the S R S S, and then our site based self efficacy. This one in particular rates three different areas. And this came out of COVID when we were seeing some of our students struggling and what areas we really wanted to focus on measuring growth from their their positive peer relationships, their problem solving skills, and then their self regulation. These are our end of year results, so that you can see those in tier one. In kindergarten, you'll see seventy six percent of our kids met tier one status and positive peer relations on over. Going back to our restorative practices, you will see that the areas that are asterisk, that is where our grade levels saw the most amount of growth from fall to spring in the area of problem solving. So when we implement a restorative practices, it really does focus on having kids take ownership in how to solve problems, how to gain empathy with one another, and really looking at how to approach problem solving, not only individually, but as a team. So across the board, we had all but one of our grade levels that said that that was their major area of growth this year. I can tell you from a principal perspective, using that from my approach with discipline and bringing kids in the office, I am simply a facilitator, a problem solver at that point. And the kids take ownership of their own, their own consequence. They understand how their actions affect others, and it's been a much more effective approach, I would say than the traditional more punitive ways of approaching discipline. You'll see our touch points, we like to call them touch points, and what our counselors do each and every day relative to group counseling, individual counseling, risk assessments. Overall, we had over two thousand touch points at the elementary levels where our counselors and our our S E L team members met with students. When they are in our teams, our M T S S meetings, we're looking at the data like the data set that I presented in the slide previous to this one, and they plan interventions. They may be tier one interventions where they see overwhelmingly that we're having a class that is having difficulty with, let's say, peer relations. They'll push into those classrooms and give a whole group instruction. If they see singular singular students across grade levels that are exhibiting difficulties, they might have group classes that really target those skills, or they do the one on one interventions as well. But overall, we appreciate the additional support that you've given us. It's it's definitely been necessary and and helpful. And then finally, our last data point is from our S R S S data. And this measures how our kids internalize and externalize their feelings relative to our social emotional learning. Generally, before the pandemic, we saw kids in the tier one rate of about eighty seven percent. Here you'll see that that's some somewhat stable, but we are, there is a little bit more of a need that we are, we're seeing focusing on that. I'm sorry, I I got that data point wrong. We had ninety percent of our students at the tier one level. So it's it has dropped a little bit, and we are closing the gap, but there's definitely still a need for how we address our kids and and how they're they're behaving.
So as we think about looking forward, one of the things that we're going to continue to be focusing on is our P B I S efforts. The idea of being consistent and really able to articulate what our areas of focus are around student behavior, but also the P is really important, the positivity. We're working with elementary students. So how are we making sure that as we're working towards behavioral expectations, that they are framed and grounded in the positive approach? That's something that we're working with as teams on our sites with the M T S S support we have moving forward. We also are really looking for ways that we can integrate the positive school character focus across not just tier one in classroom lessons, but also in various spaces. So for instance, our work with P E, our coaches and teachers around having the character sportsmanship, how to play, how to win, how to lose, how to compete, how to communicate. And that's a great space for us to really build that, and that's a big focus for us moving into the upcoming year. I'm looking for other places where we can embed those daily activities and daily lessons authentically, which again speaks to that student voice and choice as well. Then we also are looking at continuing the restorative practices and do it through both the professional development ongoing and then through the natural collaboration through P L Cs, through our grade levels, and having teachers engage with that. And all of those and and some also speak to the focus that we both have on attendance and how we're going to continue to move the needle there. And really thinking that so much of that will increase as we not just communicate with families, but create that space where students feel engaged and connected and like they truly belong and want to be there. And they are advocating for their own attendance because they're excited to be at school. So those are the areas that we're looking forward to as we move into the upcoming school year.
Let's finish the presentation, please.
Yeah, so earlier this year, and under goal tool, I was sharing my excitement about our behavior committee and the building, building around our school's behavior expectations, the newfound disciplinary matrix that we developed, analyzing data that was there, looking toward building up on our check in checkout student mentoring practices on our campus, as well as looking for ways we can also enhance our student celebrations and also strengthen our restorative practices. This year, similar to the elementary schools, you know, we had Karen Yonker who came in and helped support training on twenty of our seventh grade students, who then went down to both of the elementary schools. And it was a great opportunity to transition circles with fifth graders and preparing them for their middle school journey. So I'd like to thank my partners in allowing me and our team to do that, have that experience. But with that in mind, you know, I I chose to highlight some of the investments that we made in our P B I S framework, as well as the work that we did to dramatically enhance ways in which we celebrate students across our campus. For P B I S, we had humble beginnings. We had a very small but mighty behavior team that was very proud about developing a common language around our behavior matrix, really developing a disciplinary matrix that helped to say, if you have this type of behavior, these are the types of consequences that would follow, as well as a centrally managed check in checkout system, which is essentially mentorship through administration and our counseling team, as well as a live school digital platform that was utilized as a like a digital currency to provide reinforcement and awards for kids that they could then use in our T M S student store who modeled great behavior. Over the course of the year, our behavior committee slowly monitored our Swiss data. And, you know, if you build it, essentially, they will come. We saw an influx in usage of our Swiss referral system, which definitely pushed our team to think a little bit more creatively about ways that we can be more educational and proactive to help sway the the results that we saw. And through a restorative lens and wanting to teach students to be more reflective about their. And through a restorative lens and wanting to teach students to be more reflective about their behavior and the impact that they have on others, we piloted a character education program published by Advantage to help students reflect on that impact. And because we weren't seeing the same trajectory with positive reinforcement as we were seeing with usage with our Swiss system, we also investigated why that might be. And we found that our live school platform that we're using was quite cumbersome. And so in the interim, we developed more tangible smart card results to, or a smart card reinforcements to reinforce that behavior as we look to explore other platforms to help more fluid positive reinforcement through our campus. Students that were being mentored for check-in, check-out, twenty to be exact, we also saw eighty percent of them make positive gains and also behavior that mentorship. The other four students that were left remaining required more intensive support and beyond mentorship, which then we partnered with our special education team to provide behavior plans for students. We also had a great partnership with Education Elements this year around the topic of appearance standards. That was a lot of fun and looking for ways to find and having a balanced and equitable approach to what was previously known as our dress code. And after months of stakeholder engagements with students, parents, and staff, we finally have a nice set of draft standards that we will move, move forward with and monitor over the course of next year. As for communications, we look to memorialize a lot of our work by offering a community-friendly information on our website that highlights our philosophy and practices, and also have that in our handbook as well. For student celebrations, I, I can't say enough about our assistant principal, Ms. Hammer. She's been tremendous and she's had such a multiplier effect on the ways in which we celebrate students this year. And as you can see, you know, added a hundred and eighty-four student celebrations, forty-seven student lunch recognitions or breakfasts, as well as another hundred and forty-three student of the month lunches too as well. And so those have been nice additions to have. Going into next year, you know, we definitely look forward to being more forward-facing with our philosophy and practices, to bring more staff along with the student mentorships that it's not done primarily centrally, so that we can all work together to mentor our students. We're very excited about the digital platforms that we'll use to help make our efforts more seamless when it comes to positive reinforcement. And we look forward to maintaining our momentum around the student celebrations that we have and honoring more kids as we move forward. So thank you.
When we look at goal two at the high school and we really focus on socio-emotional competency and building self-identity among students, what we're really talking about is building out culture and community among our staff and students. And I'm very fortunate to work with an amazing group of educators at the high school campus, but also my colleagues at the other campuses, because we talk about this all the time. And I'm really open to these conversations because this is a passion of mine, is really building out school culture and student experience. So for that, you can see some of our highlights are really focused around starting a school year with a really comprehensive needs assessment for students. I was proud of our students because over eighty-two percent of our students responded to that needs assessment. And it was really nice for us to be able to drive our work around that. I also like this goal because it really complements goal three about safe, equitable, and inclusive school environments. And I think a lot of the work that we talk about in goal two is reflective of this goal, obviously, but also the work in, in goal three. So starting with that needs assessment really helped us drive our work and build community around student needs. It also really outlined some staff wants because we shared our student needs assessment results with our teaching staff. And I'm going to share an example of how that worked for us in the work that we did in a, in a moment. But I also wanted to highlight, really with our new schedule coming forward, we have a lot of opportunities for students. Again, you've heard me say it, have more choice and versatility in their schedule. And that's really going to impact how our students lead on their campus because they won't be limited to just traditional leadership opportunities. We have breaker leadership, which working with young adults is nice because you can give a lot of this vision back to them. And we really challenged our club leaders in our breaker leadership group, which are the leaders of all the forty-plus clubs that we have on campus, to talk about the legacy they want to leave behind for their, for their club, but also for students that participate with them in their club. And we asked them to focus on cultural competencies, empathy, tolerance, being imaginative and creative, building integrity, and being inclusive and having collective openness. So they built legacy statements around that work and that direction, which was really exciting for them to leave behind as we move into a new school year next year. We're also very excited about being able to offer a space for our students to go when we complete our, what is currently under a lot of construction now, our wellness space. We have some really good collective work around that with Dr. Keller and our team at the high school around what that's going to look like and how we're going to serve students in that space. So that's exciting for us. When we talk about contacts for this work in the, around goal two, what we're really talking about is, I don't know if you remembered in my presentation earlier in the year, but we talked about counseling contacts being more direct contact focused than indirect. Now, both are very important spot, spaces for students to have work and supports and services provided to them. But what we really wanted to focus on was increasing our valuable direct contacts with students. That's reflected on, the, the numbers reflect that on the right side of this line. But back to the, the story that I'd like to tell around really interactive, data-driven work. And it, it goes back to our beginning of the year needs assessment with students. And we posed a question to students that went something like this. I need support in the following areas. And then students had an option to score where they needed support on a Likert scale scenario. And those supports were around mental health, navigating friendships, time management, goal setting, family challenges, and LGBTQ issues, among a variety of other things. And one of the, the data sets that we removed from that, which you see on the left here, is needs around support and service to students that may be struggling or just simply curious about LGBTQ plus issues. In turn, it drove teacher curiosity because they wanted to be able to respond to students that had that need. And our, so we found out this need from our needs assessment with students. Then in turn, presented it to staff. Staff wanted to feel equipped and ready to help respond and support students that might be having questions or are struggling with a variety of issues. And this was one where we really embraced the process and utilized our community resources, had some staff training around this issue so that our staff not could feel like experts, but could at least feel competent in helping and assisting students in their, in their challenges or any questions or support that they may have. So that was a really great outcome of a, of a really sound process in assessing student needs around counseling, support, and services. Really proud of our group for being able to provide that needs assessment and then respond with really, I think, sound and impactful work. As we look forward, we're very excited about continuing this work. I think the more we can be reflective around building out community and culture on our campuses, the better off we are. The more we invite student voice and choice around this issue, both in the classroom, but on their campus and out in the greater community, I think the better off we are. So obviously, we're going to continue to, to provide our regular needs assessments to students so that we can always renew and revisit issues that may be challenging for them or areas that they may just, may need support on. We're going to build on our break, breaker leadership work that we did with our club leaders, of course, because that was very impactful and effective and, and really heavy with student vision and voice, which I appreciate. And then, of course, continue our outreach with our community agencies to help us in, in collaboration with the work that we need to do to support our students, but also to help our, to help our staff grow and be knowledgeable of, of what our students are facing as it relates to challenges or issues on campus during their time at the high school. And obviously, like you heard me mention, we're really excited about the completion of the wellness space and then really maximizing student leadership across the board. So we are going to have the luxury of having almost double the amount of students in ASB next year with our new schedule. Just there's more space for them to participate in ASB, which is a great, great venue for lead, student leadership. But we're also really focusing on tapping in on other areas of, of leadership on our campus, among student athletes, among club leaders, and then also our standard operation with student senate, right? We will have a lot of voice in that area too. So that's really what we're looking forward to. And of course, I always like to be mindful of the fact that when we check our challenge success surveys and our LCAP responses, we consistently have students that feel connected to school. Eighty-two percent of our students feel that they can go to a staff member if they have a problem. Ninety percent of those, the ninety percent of those students that answered that same question feel like they also have a friend or a colleague on campus that they can go to. But what we really need to remember is to focus on either that eighteen or ten percent that aren't making that connection and really maximizing our opportunities to help support and serve those students too. Not a perfect science, it's always a challenge, but it's always important for us to be mindful of that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the third goal for areas of focus around safe, equitable, and inclusive schools. I'm going to go through this here, we've had this, the schools kind of combined some of their, their work and highlights here. Some will point out a couple of key things that were seen across the schools or within each schools. So here's a lot of highlights, which we'll talk about a little bit more in depth in upcoming slides that focus around professional learning experiences, safety, as, as well as students have a wide variety of courses. And so one thing I did want to point out here is the work the schools have done that are very specific to their schools. Dr. Allman mentioned, just mentioned an example of one that he was doing around student needs. Appearance standards that middle school talked about. The elementaries were working on some stuff with staff as well as looking at different programs. All this around the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. And so what they've done this year in that area is find very specific needs that their school has. And so we've mentioned that a little bit earlier, and it's really important that they're able to do, yes, there are some things that we do district-wide, but there's some things that are really important that they're addressing specifically to their, for their school. As you know, safety is one of our top, our top priority here. This is safety preparedness, who speaks to this slide. The school sites do a lot of drills, a lot of training for, for staff and students. The, we even had some students trained in CERT this year at the high school. Couple of weeks ago, there was a simulated casualty training at the high school as well. But different things going on around safety, and there's been a lot of, and over the last five, six, seven years, we have seen a lot of reduction in students that feel unsafe on campus or students that feel like they've ever been bullied. Which is not, it's not at a hundred percent, we know that. But we have seen like, for example, in California, the kids at the middle school, students that have not experienced bullying is up into the eighty percent, and that was much, much slower. I think, believe around fifty, forty, or forty-five or fifty percent and six, seven years ago. And so a lot of good things going, going in the right directions. And as you can see, the schools are trying to personalize that support for their school or kids, sometimes based on things coming out of the pandemic, sometimes just based on the age of kids and their level of risk-taking that they're, that they want to take. We also talked a little bit of this slide, just about the wide variety of classes students are taking. I've mentioned some of this before, but you look across the schools, just a lot of different options for kids around their strengths, their assets, their interests, where they can explore, things about who they are, what they might want to do, and sometimes find things that they don't want to do. You can see all different clubs and sports at the high schools, exploratory wheels, advanced placement. At the elementary, we mentioned earlier, that's a school program, right? There's all kinds of participants when they, they expand to kinder, a whole variety of classes. And then we've also, thanks to the board's vision around having more specialized instruction at the elementary level. And so having an art teacher, music teacher, science, world language, computer science, PE, really provides that experience for students. It's well-rounded, and I think all, all of our schools are doing a really good job at continuing to find ways to improve and refine that. Third thing I want to put out just around professional development. Overall, we survey, we have an annual survey. We do survey after bigger trainings, like our big district-wide PV days or something like unit design, which has been one of our top initiatives this year, or the leadership pathway that I mentioned earlier, the Lawrence Center Collaborative. And this, I want to share, this is, this is, when you look across other districts that may have some similar, similar questions, like this is very, very high when you're above eighty percent, eighty-five percent, you're in a really good spot in staff. Because there's never going to meet the needs of everyone, but you're really getting really, really close. You can provide that in different ways for those who may not be. So eighty-six percent students feel like this is positive impact, a very high number. And some of those key initiatives we had are on unit design, hundred percent, leadership pathway, hundred percent. So those were impactful, and that's why we were asking to bring more of that back, and, and thank you for supporting that. But again, this maintains a promise, we always want, we want of our students is we want to continuously improve. We're always growing and evolving to be better at what we do. Looking forward, on, on this last slide here, this goal, just a couple of things we wanted to kind of highlight some of the work that they're doing. We mentioned some of these earlier, but what I wanted to pull out of all this is what we've seen a lot more of in the last year. We're looking forward to expanding it even more is the work cross-curricular, across subject areas, as well as vertically. So we've had high school students reading the kindergartens. We had, we had high school students doing some med training at others, some of the middle, at the middle elementary levels. I think most recently, the middle school had, did, had some students go and do a sort of circles at the elementary level as part of that transition, getting them ready for middle school. So a lot of that's come out of some of the things like flow, project at the high school, the unit design. We're getting elementary teachers together with high school teachers, together with middle school teachers, math, science. So it's really creating these things that are connecting the dots for kids and giving them ownership of their learning and letting them also teach the kids. And so we're looking forward to doing a lot more of that next year. That's been a really positive thing that we've seen a lot more of this year that we wanted to share and highlight, that we're looking to continue to expand that even more next year.
Okay, thank you. So sustainability has been a longstanding goal and priority for this district. So making improvements in this area is not easy, but because of the board and superintendent's leadership, we've provided the resources to allow us to continue our, our goal to be now carbon neutral by 2030. And it's something we're really proud of, and it is attainable. And you'll note that we have our, a draft of the operational plan that we included is linked in this report, and it's still in development, but there is a path forward, and I want to thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to continue on this, this journey. So beginning with the primary highlight, and this is a major function for this year, was establishing what our carbon footprint is. And without that data, you can't map out forward how we're going to get to carbon neutrality. So you can see here, we've identified, and this is again, thanks to our partnership with Green Schools National Network, identified our, our current carbon footprint as identified by the amount of electricity used in kilowatt hours, the thermals of natural gas. And we also include a metric for waste diversion because we want our, our diversion rate to be a hundred percent to go in line with the carbon neutral goal by 2030. Now, one thing I would like to note on here, when you look at the three hundred and sixty-three metric tons of carbon dioxide, that's the equivalent for the electricity generated. Please know that is based on our total electrical usage for one year, it's about eight hundred and forty thousand kilowatt hours. But one thing that's not included in this calculation is forty-eight percent of that energy that we get from Southern California Edison is already coming from renewable resources. So the actual amount of carbon offset that we would need to do would only be for four hundred and forty thousand kilowatt hours. And that translates to about a hundred and ninety metric tons of carbon dioxide. So it's not as large as it appears. It is still large, but it's definitely, as I said, attainable. When you look at, back at the work that our sustainability task force did this year, there's a lot of projects identified. And at the April meeting, when I provided the sustainability report, I gave a little glimpse of our sustainability workbook or database planning that maps out all the projects that our sites are working on. That is something we're going to continue to maintain. And that, what that'll allow us to do is not only just focus on the larger projects and sustainability initiatives, but also focus in on some of the smaller things that may not have as large of an impact on our carbon footprint, but are important for the learning of students to be still, to, to come up in a world and know what is a sustainable practice and so that we can leave it better for them and they can leave it better for their kids. Looking forward with our sustainability, as I mentioned, the operational plan for twenty-three, twenty-four is nearly completed, it's in draft state. The, one of the largest focuses that we have for next year obviously is going to be the feasibility study on the application of solar or photovoltaics at our sites. That is something that we know have the largest impact on reducing our carbon footprint because as, even as you look at the Because as even as you look at the natural gas, the plan would be to replace all of our natural gas units with electric over time. So building in the capacity with whatever electricity generation you have needs to be assumed in that um request for qualifications and proposals for the solar feasibility study that we complete this summer. Uh when we go through our primary metrics, again, we have the natural gas converting to electric, our waste uh really focusing in this year on standardizing not only our waste receptacles, but also our training, our verbiage and creating a training platform so that it's a universal language throughout the district, so that we know exactly what to do with all pieces of waste that we we uh have in hand. And then, of course, water. Uh the current goal is not to getting to the point of capturing or not using water at all. Um but certainly doing water capture where we can uh with rain barrels and other uh technologies that may be available. But also, and this is something that we've been doing this year, is we've been working with our landscape contractor who specializes in irrigation, that Sequoia. Um and we've been doing landscape replacements with not only plants, but also irrigation types, moving to drip irrigation systems wherever we can, um constantly checking for water leaks and adding flow detectors at all of our sites, so we can preemptively catch water leaks before you start seeing them come out of the ground. So it's again, important work that we've done this this year. Can't thank you enough for your support and superintendent's support in this effort. It is something that we all care about in this community and it's something that we will um, we we are happy to work for, no matter how hard it is, because we're passionate about it as a staff, so thank you.
Me to the to the end, so um you know, since sixteen, seventeen, you've really remained um committed to the the building blocks below the every student, every day. Relationships matter and continuous improvement, those really have kind of guided us through last many years and uh whether, you know, as the landscape changed for a couple of years, as we've been navigated on a pandemic and what we needed to do there. But I think if you can see some of the areas that were really kind of focused on and have built out, thanks again to the board for their uh their support over the years and adding these programs uh really around um kind of the twenty-four, seven support for families, whether it's through the online tutoring system paper, um our addition recently of Care Solus. Um really the diversity of programs, I know um all the members have really supported and appreciate, you know, the the CCA, CTE classes we've been able to add, work experience, clubs, sports, all those things really do round out um and help students feel connected to their campus. Uh we really want uh our staff to know their students. I think you heard a little bit about that from uh our staff earlier today. And uh again, thank you to the board, uh as we look at our family resource center. Um and you'll you'll get a picture of the the kind of completed product um in the weekly update tomorrow. But really proud of being able to open that and and look forward to be able to have uh have that at the center of um how we support our families in in Louisiana Unified School District with our partners that we have. Um so I appreciate the school power support and I expect that we'll continue to have additional partners uh being uh being there with us to support our families' needs. And and last but definitely not least, and probably one that uh drives staff a little crazy is the focus on continuous improvement, always trying to find ways that we can improve and get better. Being very uh focused on feedback loops, talking with staff, figuring out what are we doing, how can we continue to work? And I think you saw a lot of that tonight. So I appreciate all this um, the presentations from the sites, looking at, you know, what are we doing data-wise and how does that reflect? Um and how can we kind of take those steps? And if it's a really high data point, how do we maintain that while also bringing up those other data points, right? So not to lose one for the other, right? How do we keep consistent and improve in those other areas? Um so it does create accountability accountability for us, but it also helps us um, you know, not implement the bright and shiny new object. I think that was something that um, you know, was has always a concern in education around, you know, uh something that's new and and but remaining consistent and what are we doing and how are we improving the results? And if we're not, if it's not working, that's okay, we need to recognize that and do something different. I think and oftentimes in education, we can continue to do the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. And we need to shift and I want to be, I'm really proud of our staff, they shift. They look at things, they examine, um you know, I think that was just testament to what you saw tonight and how much work they have accomplished on there. So my gratitude to our staff, um all the folks at the table here who continue to to really push forward um in this, in these areas. And thank you again to the board for all of your ongoing support in these areas, because we definitely couldn't do it without increases in counseling and increases in support. Um and so I look forward to next year um and being able to uh talk about where we're headed. Uh getting board feedback in August and kind of build this out again and then be back here again. Uh sitting in in June of next year, talking about what we've accomplished as a district. So thank you again for all your support.
Can you have the microphone, please? Mar Darwish, I have a seventh grader now, she's soon to be eighth grader. And at the CTE meeting on May twenty-fourth, and Miss Musa mentioned that there was a hundred and ninety percent increase in bullying at Thurston. So um I want to know, does the school track of bullying? Is it, is it done on a site basis, district basis? And it is also further broken down to um whether the victim is a child with disabilities? So that's my question.
Thank you for your comment. Um you know, I I don't know the number that Ms. Mosse was talking about. Um although I do know that is definitely something that I hold near and dear to my heart, is we don't want any of our kids to be having experiences like that on our campus. Um I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I do know that our suspension rates have decreased from four percent somewhere around that, like last year to three percent this year. Ms. Mosse is on our our behavior committee and I'm so thankful for you to join that um going into next year, I appreciate that. Um I do, you know, when I was talking about um our usage of our Swiss system, she may have been commenting about how the usage from our staff has increased in regards to behavioral referrals. But a majority of those have been the minor referrals, type tech violations, classroom disruption, not so much that bullying is becoming more prevalent. Although I do know what we're trying to do is to make sure that kids do know that when these things exist on our campus, that they have proper reporting periods or ways that they can connect with administration, whether in person or anonymously, so that we can handle those situations swiftly.
I would, I would uh and and I'll be happy to discuss offline. But uh that information's incorrect, so I'm concerned that staff, I would show that we have nothing in any of our data that that would indicate that, so I'm not sure where she, so to the board, I'm not sure where that even came from, to be honest. So uh we'll uh we'll uh we'll, I'll be happy to try to put up my clarification on that or uh Dr. Mayberry can. Um but that's not information that uh is anyway accurate, so I'm not sure where that was from, so. Any board questions?
Have any board questions, comments on this, on this presentation? But not a question. Okay. I'm very impressed, fantastic results, getting so many students that were in tier three by the end of the year out of tier three, I mean, huge kudos to all of you. Uh very, very thoughtful work you've done, I love all the restorative practices. I think how far we've come. Um I was just reflecting on um nine years ago, before we had Dr. Valoria. Um our superintendent asked, when I was newly on the board, what was my number one goal? And I said, to get SCL into our schools. And the staff and other people said, what is that? And I said, social emotional learning, and it was look how far we've come. Thank you, thank you. I mean, it, people, you know, wanted kids to be kind to each other, but there was no um and students to advocate for themselves, et cetera, but there wasn't a whole movement for it. And you've done a lot in that way. And for the, and for student voice also, and and I hope we go further with student voice. For our sustainability, I hope that next year um we also have more community partners, because I know a lot of people have talked to me about being interested in that, and I think that's part of our plan. So great work, thank you very much.
Um I don't know where to start, very impressive. Uh this is the second part of it, we saw it, I think, at the halfway point. And I'm just so impressed with all of you and what good team players you are. Thank you.
Kelly, do you have? She's not.
It is an impressive report, and I think one thing that I um attribute some of this to is keeping the same goals year in and year out. And I just can reflect to a year when I'm sure you were still working, Member Perry, um that we couldn't bring any new things in because it was during a financial crisis time. And there were a number of teachers that commented to me that they were really glad that they were going to be able to continue to build on what they had done the year before, rather than that there had been a pattern of bringing something new in every year. And I, I'm a firm believer in the fact that having these same overarching goals uh allows us to go deeper and to continue to improve. And of course, continuous improvement was around for a long time, and that is key to a successful education experience. I mean, we must do that all the time. I just had um a comment on, I heard it from both, I think, probably more from Thurston and the high school, because we it's a little bit, I think, easier to do it in elementary. But the fact of looking at, making sure that students feel included, that they feel heard. And particularly appreciative, Dr. Allman, that you mentioned looking at that other percent, that not just saying we have this high percent that feel that way, but knowing that we need to try to capture the others who aren't feeling that way. And so I'm I'm pleased with that, the focus is on that. I'm also pleased to see the work that we did with educational elements coming in at all levels and the fact that that's being applied. And uh because it is from, you know, serving on that committee, it's very important and it's important for our students to have that as they, as they go forward, if you're looking at portraits of graduate. And it's just, um I'm very pleased, very pleased with this report and what we're doing for students, not just the academics. And I think again, to remember Perry mentioned it, but I know that that's been an emphasis that Dr. Valoria is to bring in that. We have the whole department that did not exist before. And so it's, and especially we heard what we're hearing from some of our speakers tonight from the high school staff, it's a key element now. And we're not just in our community, but across the country, we're seeing this um student need in in mental health and social emotional support, it's it's become a critical need, so thank you. We have a little bit more, we moved our reports to the end. Um we don't have any student board members tonight, it's uh, it's been a great pleasure to have them and we will have, we will have our new members soon. Nick said he might come, but obviously, but he changed his mind. Uh we do not have a school resource officer, so Dr. Valoria, you're up.
No report.
Okay, we have our executive cabinet members, Mr. Dixon.
No report.
Mr. Conlon.
I have a brief report. Uh no, just want to say it was a a successful wrap-up to the year and and like, and like the union echoed uh the end of your barbecue last Friday was was amazing, well-attended. And uh we're looking forward to just uh getting ready for the next school year. It's because he didn't get a speaking part in the last update, so I'll make sure we can get him one next, next time.
I can remember.
No report, but I did want to thank Mr. Conlon for like kicking under his wing on on the grill and showing me how to flip burgers and it was really impressive, it's very knowledgeable.
You're definitely work in progress.
Did he have an apron?
I've never seen a man burn himself that many times, never getting a grill, but we'll get some very long, full loves from him next year.
We have we have a government section board member reports. Um I was just very honored to be part of celebrating our students on their promotions at Top of the World, Neil Morrow and Thurston, and being part of the high school graduation and seeing all these wonderful young people start new chapters in their lives.
I attended the honors uh convocation, which was just excellent. Um my scholarship, we gave out six awards to LGBTQ members. This is the first time we had a representative from each one of the groups. Um I didn't know which one was which, uh because it was all by paper and uh I had them come up, why I gave my top. I never really got to see them, so I'm looking forward to the pictures, so I can see who these kids were. Um but it was just fun, um I've started getting my thank you notes uh and um I was number forty-seven and when I, this was at eight o'clock, and it was still to go to a hundred and twenty-three. So I took it upon myself to uh since no one uh of importance was there to have everyone stand up and stretch. Uh and because they were fidgeting uh and Patty's, and I told them, you're halfway there. And so when I was leaving, Patty said, it's only a third of the way, you know, you know, get them sitting down. But it was just wonderful, wonderful event, as far as we gave out over four hundred thousand dollars in in awards to uh, I don't know how many students, but two hundred and seventy students. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and and if you added in the Naval Academy Scholarship, it was like eight, eight hundred thousand dollars was getting out that that night, which was just impressive. I also uh went to promotions and I went to the graduation and I got to sit uh to stand next to one of my favorite board members who chatted up everybody. And and that was real helpful, because one of my award winners in in her uh note today said she was going to the Loop College Arts and Design and D got that out of her, so I at least I know who, what one, one of them looked like. Um and then I finally got to end on with the staff barbecue and uh it was just impressive seeing uh all the hard work that um administrators were doing and how much fun the faculty and staff were having and uh all of the different uh gifts that they that they were winning, and so I think it was a very successful event. Thank you.
Kelly is off, right? I also attended the honors convocation. It's a long tradition in the community, and as I mentioned to Member Kelly uh the next day. Uh we've always been really inclusive on the stories to tell, because that's really important and people, whether it's memorial or whether there's another story behind it. And so it does take a long time to get through all the awards, but it's very important for those to be able to share that each and every year um to reflect on on the reason behind it. And I think it's important for our students to hear that and to hear what drives that kind of stewardship. Um I did attend most of the promotions and graduations, I let Megan know that I could not come, and it's funny, because when I said I was watching, what I was watching is it it's a more like a nanny thing, it's a two and four-year-old. So it was, you know, it was food and diapers, it was not, and she thought I was going to a promotion in another place. But uh I think that our graduation, promotion for Thurston and graduating from the high school are going very well at the field. I think it's really, I think it gives the students a real connection to our district. And I know they always liked the Irvine Bowl, but I think it's been very successful there. And they really, our staff worked really, really hard to have it all spruced up. It looked great, and I'm sure our community appreciates that. Then I just want to say that I, again, with with my other obligations, I got to the uh barbecue basically when they were cleaning up, moving the hay bales, but we got ice cream, so that's the most important thing. If you, if you live in my house, ice cream is super important. So and I was sorry to not see all the folks there, I heard it was a tremendous, probably the biggest turnout yet. And uh that's a great way to end the year, I think we've um, we, our staff really appreciates, that appreciates that recognition. So that said, I think it's a another successful school year and it's a lot of hard work. And I think that, I think as board members, we let our staff know that we really appreciate and recognize that educating students is a lot of work, it's a lot of work on the campus and a lot of work when you're home and preparing for that, so thank you. Uh do you have a superintendent or a superintendent? Then our next regular meeting is July, Miss whoever, twenty-seventh, but board policy on July twelfth. Board policy on July twelfth. July, June twenty-sixth and. I had that one, thank you. Thank you very much. So I motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, I post, carries.